All right, so Sharif, I think I can hear you. You want to say hi, everybody? All right, so it looks like we're good to go. And Sharif, if you're able to rotate your phone as well, let's get it going on landscape mode. All right, so welcome, everybody. My name is Garth Johnson. I am the Paul Phillips and Sharon Sullivan curator of ceramics at the Iverson Museum of Art. And I apologize to everybody if I'm a little bit flustered today. I accepted a very gracious invitation from the Clay Studio to co-host a conversation with Kevin Snipes that started at noon. And so I've been doing this already for an hour and I hop onto this call and I'm excited to keep the conversation going. I've got my caffeine and it's going to be terrific. But this is an interesting sort of bookended conversation about two very different approaches to blackness ceramics, African American bodies. And I'm really excited to-
I don't seem to be able to get a video up for you.
Welcome to Sharif Bay for this. Let's see, I'll remind everybody to keep your audio on mute, but keep your video on. We love to see your smiling faces paying attention to the broadcast.
But I don't seem to be able to fix-
Okay, so we are here, let's see, am I able to mute all? Let me get this going. All right, I think we should be good in that regard. Great to see some friendly faces who've been joining us and some new faces. We are here every week during the pandemic shutdown. As long as the Iverson is shut down, we will be here at 1 o'clock PM every Friday with a different conversation with someone relating to the Iverson's collection and to the field of ceramics. Next week, it's going to be my great pleasure to be focusing on the life and the career of Howard Kotler, another ceramic artist with a doctorate. And we will be bringing in the gallerist and scholar and artist Paul Cattula and also Dr. Judith Schwartz for that conversation. So look forward to a very spicy conversation about a very spicy artist, Howard Kotler, next week. Remember that you can always go to www.everson.org and check out our upcoming programming. I'm going to go ahead and bring on the slides that I normally share. And I generally start off by talking a little bit about the Iverson's collection and its history in relationship to the guests that we have today. And I'm sorry to say that the Iverson does not have a piece yet from Sharif Bay in our collection, but that's a matter of time. And Sharif lives in Syracuse and is a vital part of our community. And so we're looking forward to making that a long conversation. And we're going to be having sort of multiple important Sharif pieces in the Iverson's collection. And we look forward to making him a fixture of our collection. But I'm going to share my screen and talk a little bit about some other things in the Iverson's collection, particularly the Iverson's relationship to collecting both African art and art by African American artists, African American potters. So let me share my screen very quickly. Okay, so I think everyone should see my screen. This is fairly familiar for everybody. Remember, you can go to www.everson.org and check out our programming. And you can also go to everson.org and if you click on collections, you can click on ceramic archive and you can actually see quite a few pieces that are in the Iverson's collection. You can look through our archives and find correspondence, photos, all of the catalogs from the Iverson Ceramic Nationals have been made available to the public. So if you are needing to go down a research rabbit hole for a project or for your own personal enrichment, the Iverson is here for you for that. So again, the artist that we're welcoming today is Dr. Sharif Bay. So I want to, I've talked about this a little, a little bit. I've talked about representation of underrepresented communities in the Iverson. And the Iverson has a long history of actually maybe doing better than most museums when it comes to collecting and giving awards to underrepresented communities. But I want to put that in perspective a little bit. And that is definitely not to say that the Iverson hasn't had its shortcomings over the years. When we talked to Courtney Leonard and Peter B. Jones, we talked about the fact that Maria Martinez was in the second Ceramic National. Her work was given an award. The Iverson began to collect her work in some depth. And that all began in 1933. The Iverson sent Maria Martinez's work abroad as a part of a survey. The Iverson worked with different settlement houses to bring in underrepresented artists, particularly, I'm forgetting the name of the settlement house in Chicago, but they worked with recent Mexican immigrants. And those recent immigrants were included in early Ceramic Nationals and collected and given awards and brought into the Iverson's collection. So what does all of this mean and how does it relate to my conversation with Sharif? The Iverson has a reasonable history since we began focusing on ceramics of bringing in work by African potters, bringing in historical and traditional vessels into our collection. One of the great pieces in our collection, which actually came through the artist Angelo Garcia, is this Ladi Quali piece. And Ladi Quali is an amazing Nigerian potter who studied with Michael Cardou and made a great career and visited the United States several times and made tours and was a very sort of visible and vocal proponent of African pottery and the way that it relates to sort of global pottery culture and to Bernard Leach, Michael Cardou and the sort of Leechian tradition in general. So we have this wonderful spouted pouring pot with a spout at the bottom and a spout at the top. And it has this, I think, scorpion figure in it. It has this very accorant milky glaze on top. But the Iverson has done less well when it comes to collecting the work of African American artists and African American potters. I can't even think of African American potters who were represented in any of those early Ceramic National exhibitions. Certainly, none of those artists got purchase awards and were brought into the Iverson's collection at the same time that other artists of color were being brought into our collection. And I think that that raises a bigger question that I'm going to talk to Sharif with about in a moment. One exception is an incredible African American potter who made his home in Syracuse and taught at Syracuse University. And that's, of course, David McDonald. And the Iverson's pieces from David McDonald go back to the early 1980s. And we currently have eight or nine pieces in the collection and we are working on getting even more of David McDonald's pieces. We also have pieces from James Tanner, another artist who was involved in academia. We don't have his work collected in depth, although I would like to do that. But never was the Iverson collecting Southern potters. We do not have any pots by the enslaved Potter, Dave the Potter. Face jugs are a tradition that revolves around African American culture and religion as we speculate. And sometimes to, sometimes some of those things leave out a bigger conversation, which we'll also have with Sharif. But I'm going to show off some of the incredible pieces from David McDonald, who from the get-go was very steeped in pottery culture and not just African American culture, but he was also looking to Africa and looking to drinking gourds and looking to vessels that were created in West Africa and sort of throughout Africa. Wanted to point out this piece, which is a new acquisition, which I think dates to the early 1980s. And I can zoom in and zoom around a little bit and you can see this almost hairs for glaze and the high fire stoneware that Dave McDonald works with. You know, these very bright surfaces, the carving inside of them. This is an exquisite pot and it came through a donor named Sam Sage and just came into our collection at the end of 2019. This piece is something that we would see as being a little bit more of a signature piece from David McDonald. He makes a lot of his own tools and he's designed these ways of working that involve shaping and carving geometric patterns and sort of other representation into the surfaces of his vessels. But he's using a lot of Japanese glazes and working within sort of the global pottery tradition and fits beautifully within, you know, the Leechian tradition that goes into academia in the United States. This piece is a little bit hard to represent because it is a monumental piece. It's probably about three and a half feet in height. It's created in different sections and I believe that David refers to these actually as a covered vessel, even though it's a very sculptural piece. And it dates to 1990. This piece, I think, is a devastating piece that speaks to David McDonald's engagement with history and the representation of violence. It's interesting to be speaking to Sharif several days after an African American man was killed by the police in Minneapolis. And we can currently look to the response on both sides to that murder in Minneapolis and to look at the violence that is occurring there, which sort of bootstraps us all the way back to some of the founding violence when it comes to the United States. This is David McDonald's Middle Passage series, which he executed in the mid 1990s. You can see that he's adding these decorative elements to his pieces. He's using a lot of his kind of signature carving into the piece. He's using color. He's using very pottery glazes, but the centerpiece of these pieces, and this one in particular, is a very famous sort of engraving of a slave ship showing how all of the passengers of the slave ship were stacked almost like cordwood as they were making the passage. So the references to African American, the African American experience and African American culture are sort of both licit and below the surface when it comes to David McDonald's work. This is actually a piece that we showed and talked about with Janet Kopplos several weeks ago when we were talking about reading things into pots. And so this is a very large covered pot that's about the size of the other covered jar. I think you can see the date, 2010. It shows off David McDonald's mastery of form and surface and the fact that he can work on a large scale without sacrificing any of the unique qualities of his work. So I want to circle around to talking about the Iverson's history. I'm going to unshare my screen and I'll ask Sharif to unmute himself. So Sharif, I'd like to officially welcome you. And so to introduce you, you got your master's degree from Penn State University.
PhD at Penn State.
Your PhD was in Penn State, thank you. And you hail from the great city of Pittsburgh. Can you, can you talk briefly about your educational journey before we jump back into the conversation, Iverson's collection?
Yeah, and I can do that very briefly. You know, I came from an art family. I was certainly an art kid and I got connected with the Carnegie Museum as a very young boy, maybe age 10. And, and one thing kind of led to another from that point, different kinds of pre-college programs, leading up to a, you know, probably, I would say, maybe the most amazing and inclusive introduction to ceramic art by way of the Manchester Craftsman's Guild, where I was there for four years as a high school student, you know, pretty much working day and night from when, when school ended to when they kicked me out to, and maintaining an affiliation with that program and their visiting artist program through college at Slipper Rock University. Spent a couple of pivotal years at the Academy of Fine Arts and Design in the Slovak Republic, which was then in 1993, the newest country in the world as they sought to discover the possibilities of a democratic government. And shortly thereafter, going to University of North Carolina in Greensboro, specializing in foundry work, where I kind of took a hiatus from clay and focused on iron and lost wax casting. And somehow between then and going to get my PhD, it was kind of the, I'm dating myself, but it was kind of the welcome back Cotter experience where I taught at the Manchester Craftsman's Guild for a couple of years before kind of getting recruited to complete a PhD in our education at Penn State University.
So my question to you, I think, has everything to do with your research for your PhD and your thesis and the academic work and academic writing that you've been doing. But I brought up the fact that the Iverson was not actively showing the work of African American potters or artist designers, or really sculptors at a time when we were focusing on other communities. And I will say that I give Anna Olmsted credit for her approach to diversity, but when I look at the means to those diversity, Anna Olmsted was often reaching out to, in the case of Maria Martinez, a white anthropologist who was the connection point for Maria Martinez and other people. And she was not necessarily engaging with those communities. There certainly would have been any number of talented African American potters that could have been brought into the conversation. Can you reflect a little bit about perhaps some of the more systemic failures that may have led to sort of that oversight and lack of representation?
Well, I would, I would also probably say that, you know, one of the reasons why people, people use the term institutional racism is because it's self-sustaining. I was making a joke when I was preparing for this discussion and talking to Garth and I said, you know, I don't think there was a KKK Grand Wizard at the helm of these museums as much as, you know, people got into the habit of falling into bad habits. And not only that is you get left out of the conversation long enough, you don't assert yourself, you know? So you start to get to the point where you sustain your own marginalization. Like I could imagine seeing a call for entries for the Clay Nationals in 1961 and thinking, I'll be damned if they're thinking about considering me. And I look at the roster of people and say, I'm not Bob Turner. I'm not, I'm not Val Cushing, you know? And see that these patterns are set and sustained by certain attitudes. And I also want to say that what's really interesting about the, the natural history or anthropological context for looking at non-Western artists or artists of color is that it's a different context and a different conversation, right? So it's like, no, let's look at them, right? And it also discredits the discipline, the investment, the rigor. So it, you know, it goes back to that, oh, he can dance. He can dance, he was born able to dance, right? The same way it's this accusation that my gifts are innate. And, and I didn't come up through a tradition of rigor and discipline to get to this point. So he just happens to be carving this stuff up in his basement or he happens to be welding these things when he's not working as a plumber, right? And look how amazingly gifted he is, but they don't bring these things, they have not historically institutions brought these things into a context where we can look at these things in the same esteem as we would white male artists who've gotten top billing for centuries. So I think that that's, that's a big part of the conversation. So, so all of a sudden, it's like, oh, I've never thought about bringing those, those people into the fold, much less considering them, you know, in, in a context where we can parallel the work. And contemporary is important too, because being a part of a tradition and being part of, it's always perplexed me that artists of color historically have been contextualized in museums as part of natural history and not fine art. I think that's the reason.
I'd love to specifically talk about Augusta Savage and your research into her because she was an artist, a sculptor, who was really working at an incredibly high level at the time that the Iverson was forming the Ceramic Nationals. But I had never heard of her as a white male curator coming into the Iverson until I started having conversations with you.
In the case of somebody like Augusta Savage, who was really, I would say, about, about 80 years ago, her work was really starting to catch fire. And I found it interesting that, you know, she went, you know, right now, there is a, as you probably know, there is a, there has been a growing interest over the last five years of work by artists of color, you know? But it is, it is still a political arena. Doesn't mean everybody gets, you know, gets in, everybody gets a seat at the table. And I think that, you know, during the Harlem Renaissance, one of the big questions was, again, there was a specific kind of narrative that made its way into this particular conversation. And Augusta Savage was someone who, in frankness, she didn't play well with others by the, by the standards of that political arena. And, and when I say that, I mean, there were, you know, one of the things, to demystify aspects of the Harlem Renaissance, you know, one of the things that kind of fueled the Harlem Renaissance was esteemed, respected black male scholars getting the ear of white male philanthropists and championing specific, in most cases, black male artists. So here Augusta Savage was, you know, subversively meeting with Eleanor Roosevelt on her own. And she was very tenacious, very outspoken. She was, she started a little later, so she was, she was older than a lot of those artists who were coming up at that time. But nonetheless, a diligent educator. And had it not been for people like Augusta Savage, who literally took people like Ernest Prechlow and Norman Lewis and Jacob Lawrence under her wing, Romare Bearden, there would not be a second generation of artists kind of pushing the envelope in the 1950s. So, so to me, it's, it's not a surprise that she was marginalized in that era. I mean, she was literally ousted by, because of her, you know, perceivably cantankerous attitude and behavior. But it was really just a woman speaking her mind, right? But speaking her mind in 1925 and making her own connections and raising her own money. So it doesn't surprise me that, that history tore that page out.
So I want to start talking about your own artwork in a moment, but you teach both in the art, studio art and art education department at Syracuse University. Can you talk a little bit about any current research that you're doing and current sort of wormholes that you're going into?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things that, that my research has historically been about is revisionism. And looking about these histories, people like Augusta Savage, and one of the reasons why I sought to publish on Augusta Savage is, you know, she's amazing, you know? And because the other thing I want to add is that aesthetically, her work and her choices weren't consistent with the trend, the rising trend of African American artists at that time. And that's a whole nother complexity. And that's a question of, you know, how much of Africa, how much of the academy, how much of Europe, you know, what is the, what is the appropriate balance of art that is consistent with the narrative that is selling? And the reason I'm talking about this is because one of the things that I research and contextualize is the omissions in history. And, and excuse me for not knowing the exact pronunciation, but I talked a little bit earlier or I foreshadowed that Augusta Savage was better known as an educator because when she could not achieve the things that she wanted to achieve as an artist, and especially at the heels of the Great Depression, you know, she used, you know, monies from the WPA and the Carnegie Foundation and her connections with Roosevelt, Eleanor Roosevelt, to kind of, you know, expand these classes that started in her garage and eventually, you know, came to be the Harlem Artists, Harlem Arts Community Center. So one of the things that I'm interested in now is, is tracing the artists who, who aren't, who didn't get the recognition. So a lot of times when we think about the Harlem Renaissance, the names that come to mind for, for most people are Romare Bearden and Jacob Lawrence. And the truth of the matter is, is they were children of the Harlem Renaissance. They were not artists of the Harlem Renaissance. They're much too young, but they benefited literally from seeing. I mean, Augusta Savage was working on the ground level of her Harlem studio behind the coal stack and people would literally, kids would literally look in there and see this amazing woman working and tap on the window and ask to work. And many of those artists came to be, as I said, you know, significant artists in their own right. Like one, I mentioned Norman Lewis and he kind of missed his, his shot because he evolved into, as many artists did in the 50s, to be an abstractionist. And again, imagine it's 1957 and you're a collector and you're interested in abstract expressionism. The last thing you're going to do is buy one by a so-called Negro artist. So his works did not get any, because they didn't fit, despite him hanging out with Lee Krasner and Jackson Pollock and those folks. His work was, was completely passed over until very recently. So Norman Lewis was not the, you know, he didn't fit in either slot. So you got, you got Jacob Lawrence and you got Romare Bearden and they represented the commodification of black art of the mid 20th century. Norman Lewis didn't. And if you wanted an American action painting, you bought some work from Jackson Pollock. So I'm interested in kind of uncovering the, the identity politics behind the consumption and promotion of artists of color. And another artist that interests me because it brought me here to Syracuse in some ways in terms of my research, which started in Harlem, is a student of Augusta Savage named William Artis, who worked under her as a child and benefited from the WPA programs, but later completed his BFA and MFA here under Ivan Miskrovic, who was, whose work is all over campus, these bronze sculptures, who, that many, in many regards, deal with issues associated with the history of Jewish people, et cetera. But he worked under Miskrovic and then lived the rest of his life out as a professor and has a substantial body of work and a life legacy. But again, an artist who primarily worked in clay, who we don't hear much about.
Absolutely. So I want to transition to talking about your work for real now, but let's take a moment and I want to make sure that we plug some upcoming projects. I see Rachel Delphia from the Carnegie Museum of Art, who is joining us here. And I would love it if you could talk a little bit about some of the upcoming exhibitions that you have planned and some new gallery representation that you have.
Well, I will try to be brief despite my enthusiasm, okay? So next on the calendar is I have a solo show at Albert's Bendah in Chelsea and that opens, assuming the world doesn't end, I'm going to knock on wood, in February. And the, I had an exhibition that is postponed. It's a really exciting project. It was postponed from this coming October to spring 2021 at the Carnegie Museum. And it's a, it's a very exciting project, solo exhibition called Excavations, because in addition to showing work, current work, and I'm actually producing work in response to things from the museum, my home museum, that, from the Natural History Museum, as well as the Carnegie Museum of Art, that inspired me throughout my, my formative years as I've been an avid museum goer, you know, pretty much all my life and so has my father. So we, you know, we have this, this, this almost auto-ethnography where I'm retracing formative influences and, and also revisiting things that, you know, that, that in some ways I responded to and didn't know how to articulate, you know? Was it enthusiasm? Was it, was it inspiration? Was it curiosity? So it's, it's a really exciting project that I've gotten a lot of support from a lot of people to do and, and I'm really grateful. And then, of course, then there's a project at the Iverson that is still being hammered out in terms of the extent and- And then, of course, then there's a project at the Iverson that is still being hammered out in terms of the extent and complexity. But I think I'm as excited as anything about having an opportunity to curate an exhibition that, you know, kind of runs concurrent with my, you know, kind of my, my intersections with some of my clay heroes.
But to jump in a little bit, we're excited to be able to announce that, and it's likely going to be in 2022. And Sharif really has access to the entire museum, from curating an exhibition from the permanent collection to putting on, really, I think, what I would like to amount, it's kind of a hack word, but calling something a mid-career retrospective. But we want to show work from all facets of Sharif's life. And then I want to say that the Iverson is opening up a new café, which is going to open in phases and is going to start opening in, I think, by the end of this year, by the end of 2020. That's going to be stocked with handmade pots. And so we will doubtless be doing something with Sharif's work and his love of cooking and food with the Iverson's café as a venue. So this is going to be a very multifaceted exhibition with Sharif at the helm.
Awesome.
So Sharif, I want you to give us a little bit of context. When I first met you, you were at the tail end of really what had been kind of a career-long pattern of working in a bit of a nomadic fashion, in an ad hoc fashion, a little bit like Gabriel Roscoe, not establishing sort of a permanent studio space. But that all changed in the last year or so, and you've now got a permanent studio which you are standing in. And can you talk a little bit first about your provisional studios that led up to this and then introduce us to your current studio and the way that you work?
Yeah, you know, about eighteen years ago, I was working as the ceramic studio coordinator at the Manchester Craftsman Guild. And my wife was seven months pregnant and spent most of the time when she wasn't working, you know, napping. And, and I used, you know, every waking hour in that studio space. And I had access to a state-of-the-art studio, working on my own. And, and my, my goal since I was fifteen was to be a clay artist. And, and I learned pretty young that, you know, if you want to be a clay artist with healthcare and a clay artist with a retirement plan, you know, you might get affiliated with academia. So I was, you know, pursuing and hoping that I would get a college gig. And, and I didn't get any bites. I wasn't shortlisted at all for that couple of years that I was there. And, and circumstances had it. And of course, the Manchester Craftsman's Guild is nationally, if not internationally, known. But circumstances had it, it's a short story, that, that I ended up driving my brother to Penn State to get an interview for a geography PhD program. And as a, as somebody who's been in clay for a while, you know, it's a small world. So I called up Chris Staley and asked Chris if he'd be interested in, you know, having a cup of coffee while I'm in town or having lunch. And, you know, one thing led to another. He introduced me to the director of the school, who was an art educator named Charles Garrarium. And, you know, they recruited me and got money for me to come to school. And, you know, it, I had no interest, no idea that, that circumstances would lead to me earning a PhD in art education. I was not a good college student. I spent way too much time in the studio and barely got through all my other classes. So it was As in studio, C minuses in everything else is how I got through college. And here I am now, pursuing an advanced degree. Everybody was like, what the hell do you think you're doing? You can't stop making art. How are you gonna hit the books and teach classes during the day and do all these things? And I had no idea myself, but I started to figure out ways of doing it. And, and it started out, you know, me making, you know, working on plastic next to the crib, you know, while my kids were coming up and, you know, the whole, you know, baby monitor thing. And, and it just kind of evolved as I got support from my wife to create these satellite studios. It came to be, you know, shipping quilts and terracing gelada and a hundred pounds of clay next to the couch. And, and I got, you know, more and more clever at kind of containing the, the aspects of clay that forced us into the basement, right? Which is, it's not clean, right? And, and it was, it's interesting because I, as, and when I went in, you know, when I went off and got a degree and, you know, it almost kind of pushed me out of studio, right? Because now I'm expected to supervise teachers and wear a suit and all these things that are not really becoming of a clay artist. I felt like in many regards, this new identity was kind of compromising the identity I always had since I, you know, since I can remember really, is to be a clay artist. So, you know, I, I, all this time I'd been fighting to kind of sustain that. And when I came to Syracuse, it was really the same. I came here as an academic in the published or perish paradigm. Nobody gave a shit if I was making pinch pots next to my couch or not. But nonetheless, it's not something I could stop doing either. And, and it's something that has kind of developed in its own way. Because one of the things that I think is important about it is the context through which we make art has interesting ways of informing art. So, you know, making pots or making sculpture at the kitchenette table, making things in the living room, making things in the garage, making things in the yard. I find that not only visual influences, but even material influences have found their ways into the work. So sometimes I literally use turmeric and paste wax, because I started doing that in the kitchen one day. Sometimes I'm using Bondo and spray paint, because I pulled it out of the garage. And, you know, and it's so interesting that there's, there's a vocabulary that has kind of, you know, found its way into this work via the, it's kind of a transitory nature.
And I want to point out that you are a sort of pioneer of fireplace firing as well.
And again, you know, if you live in Syracuse, you burn a fireplace eight months out of the year. And it got to the point where it became, you know, I would probably call all of this under a heading of, some people call it the culture of making do, right? So it's just like, hey, why am I gonna, you know, have to take, you know, to me, it was always about finding a way to stay on site, right? Do I have to go to campus to do this? Can I do this here? So again, I would, I was going to campus to do a sagrifying or a pit firing. Meanwhile, I have, it was eighteen hundred degrees is the average campfire or something like that. And I figured I can do it there. So I started to utilize that. And again, I could still have the benefit of, you know, a multiplicity of influences that were, you know, within reach. And that includes the visual culture of my living room and garage and kitchen.
All right. So speaking of visual culture, I want to get you to give us a little bit of a tour. And I have to remark that in the background, we see something that I think more ceramic studios could probably use. And that's a big old boxing bag.
Well, you know, again, this, this comes, like, it really connects all these things that I've been talking about is, you know, again, I started out doing these things because I had kids and I didn't want to, you know, I'm kind of vain and I want to stay in shape. And, and well, how else are you gonna do it if you don't kind of find a way to integrate these things into your lifestyle, right? And when I talk to pre-service teachers and seasoned teachers, it's kind of like a fad diet. If these choices you make are kind of like, my New Year's resolution, I'm gonna start doing this. It's like we have ways of, of taking on too much in terms of our attitudes and expectations. It's like, well, you know, maybe you can't get a, you know, gym membership and get up every morning and go to the gym. But it doesn't mean, you know, you can't, you know, you know, hit the shit out of a bag while you're assembling spouts.
The world would be a better place if more of us were able to take out those aggressions.
So I'm gonna show, and sometimes I call it, I call it like cross-training. So this is, this is the home gym, which has served me well under quarantine. And again, this is kind of in tandem with the studio. So here are Potter's wheels, here's the weight bench, here's the studio, here's the sink, here's some storage. I have a storage space back there for packaging. I have some storage work. I have a little room back there for storing works that are complete. And I have some things that I laid out for you all, but I'm gonna walk backwards. There are some surprises, so I'm gonna push this down for now. I don't have any. And here is my, I have a couple of kilns in the back around this corner too. But I primarily use this Da Vinci kiln, which is like my pride and joy of the studio for many, many reasons. But I want to add that this, this whole thing would not be possible. This was basically a old dreary limestone foundation basement before, you know, I rolled up my sleeves and I was fortunate to get some support from a couple of different foundations to transition my studio from, from this basement to, to actually a studio in terms of ceiling the walls and glass block windows, kiln, the Jackson Pollock, Krasner Pollock Foundation, the New York Foundation for the Arts, as well as the university has been great to me in terms of helping me to transition this space. So let me know when we can jump in and where you want to go from here, because I brought up some, a lot of different things to talk about.
Yeah, I'm excited that you, yes, you mentioned to me that you had found some older pieces and were reflecting a little bit about, I don't know, threads of exploration that listed in that earlier work that you're still working out twenty-plus years later.
Yeah. And the thing about, the thing I love about these kind of conversations is, you know, it becomes so meta-cognitive. And you start thinking about things and in seeing affinities and vestiges that, you know, one may or may not even knew existed. So after you and I had talked a couple of times, I started thinking, so this is a piece I finished yesterday. Let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually do a backwards discussion for this. So, and it's odd for me to, I can't really see what I'm seeing here. But anyway, it's, this, this piece has a stopper. This is fired in my backyard yesterday at 3:00 AM. And I'm not gonna talk too much about how it's made, but this is basically a pinch pot to hump molds that I put on the wheel and then through the neck and through the stopper. But this is part of the, what I call a duality vase or a duality vessel. Am I falling away?
No, things are looking good. And if you're able also, I don't know that everyone on the call necessarily knows about Nkisi pots and the tradition of activating sculptures by driving nails into them. Can you talk a little bit about that and then talk about the duality?
Yeah, so a lot of my work has, you know, once upon a time, twenty-five years ago, I was really interested in surface, you know, and patterning and, you know, not much different. Although I was, it was mostly scrawfido, but things were, you know, patterns and, and with, you know, really obsessively in the way that David McDonald's work is, really intense patterning. So I've always been interested in service and repetition. But probably for the last ten or so years, maybe a little bit more, I've become increasingly interested in impaling the clay and representing this random repetition with either shards or metal or even sometimes old work of mine, old student work. And, and that would create the surface. And there is a tradition in West African sculpture for creating ceremonial objects that are impaled with metal and glass and sometimes wood. And that's the Nkisi culture or Nkisi sculptures. And Nkisi sculptures too are ceremonial objects. And when I, when I'm really interested in it, and as somebody who's interested in process, I want to talk about this. It's not just what it represents as a noun. And I think about this a lot. Art as noun versus art as verb. So as an object, right? But what does it mean, the action of impaling this thing? And the action is as important as what it represents after the fact. So I'm affirming an oath, I'm warding off evil spirits, I am, I am injecting this thing with power. So there are a lot of, a lot of ways and reasons why Nkisi sculptures emerged in the way that they have. So if that offers anything, I hope that's clear. But I also want to say that, you know, for my work, the history of vessels is really important to me. Also, I look at obviously West African, pre-Columbian sculpture as well as modern art. And so here's what I wanted to point out. So here is the grandson, if you will, of that piece from 2011. And this is another duality vase, when I was pretty much limited only to working at home. I mean, that piece was made at home, but it's before I had a studio. And this is just a little pinch pot comparatively, right? So scale-wise, why does my hand keep getting in there? So scale-wise, it's very small. And, you know, I just started thinking about this connection and, you know, the idea of the duality, because as you can see, there's a face on each side. But even the stopper in this case has a face on each side. But then I'm gonna pull something else out that I find really interesting. Give me thirty seconds.
Sure.
And I can hear you if you're, you have something, a question, Gar.
Yeah, so I'll put you on the spot a little bit because this is something that I've always been interested in. And I don't know, I'm a little putting it into words. But when I talked to Courtney Leonard and Peter B. Jones a few weeks ago, we talked about quotation in art and, I don't know, parody in a lot of ways. And you are quoting from different traditions without crossing the line into, sort of making it into parody or political parody or inserting pop culture, I think, into it. Can you talk about the decision to sort of adopt sort of formal elements of these pieces and conceptual elements of these pieces without kind of crossing that line, which is difficult, easy to do?
That's a really interesting question, because one of the things that, one of the questions I often get, and sometimes people are perplexed by it, you know? I'm not from West Africa. Not only that, my skin is particularly light, my hair is very thin. You know, some people don't even know that I identify as African American when they meet me, right? And, and the question of like who I am and how that connects to the influences that I draw from is something that some artists either are compelled to or feel responsibility, a responsibility for in terms of, you know, what do those influences mean and how do I? And let me know if this isn't answering the direct question. But as, as someone from the African diaspora, you know, I feel, I personally feel like I have, well, first of all, you know, one of the things that I don't do is I don't, I don't really research these things to any great extent, right? I look, I collect, I respond, and I'll certainly find out what they are so I can pay respect to the tradition of these things. But I'm not someone who's doing extensive research on a particular thing. So kind of like the African diaspora, you know, there's, there's an amalgamation of influences, you know? And this is again, getting back to those questions from the Harlem Renaissance, it's like, are we honoring this history? Are we embracing the present, you know? And, and I think one of the beauties of the here and now is that, you know, we kind of have all these things at our, at our feet to kind of respond to. So, so to me, and also some of these things, I attribute to cultural memory because there are times where I will do something and then I'll find later that there's a precedent for it that I wasn't even aware of. You know, and people say, did you, you must be doing extensive research on those Yorba forms from blank, blank, blank. Or the, you know, the Ife forms from this tradition or the Inca forms, you know? And it could just be from any number of non-Western cultures. And the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, I may not be aware of those things, but yet I see them emerging. As far as parody, I mean, there are times where I, I think about ritual in a way that is not as, you know, serious. Because I think that ritual could, you know, there are rituals that come in so many different forms. But we have ways of contextualizing rituals that in my view kind of limit how we perceive them, you know? And I had this, this is a little bit off topic, but I remember making a, having students make a series of works. And it's like, you know, is a, is a, as a college student more inclined to dip from the sugar jar or to crack open a three pack of condoms, right? So I'll say, well, let's make, let's make jars for condoms, right? Because they're more, they're more consistent with a young person's cultural landscape than one lump or two, right? So, so I think about, you know, things like that in the work that, that do offer. It was, there was, there was a quote that Rachel Delphia said, is it, is it playfully serious? And I kind of appreciated that, you know, because, because I'm not somebody who takes them, I don't take myself too seriously in that way. And I think that, that play is really important for discovery.
Do you ever feel like? Do you ever feel like, so you make work that I think is not easily digestible, that, that doesn't have, you know, we, we talked a little bit with Courtney Leonard about Kent Monkman and other artists who are inserting, you know, indigenous, uh, commentary into the form of European painting, for example. Do you ever feel like, uh, so your work, I think, is not that immediately digestible? Do you ever feel like it works to, to your detriment when it comes to curators or institutions? Not exactly knowing what, what to do or how to work with your work?
Well, actually, I, I think of that as the biggest compliment I got since the quarantine. Because, because for me, like, one of the problems that I have with postmodern art stemming from artists of color is there's something disturbingly formulaic about it. Like, I'll take this and I'll add this. You know, I'll sprinkle this ghetto dust on this classical tradition. You know, I'll invade this archetype with this, you know? And, and it's kind of dated, you know? And I'm not, you know, like, kind of like Robert Cole Scott, where there's a tradition of a certain kind of work. And, and it's not that different really from what Candy Wiley's doing, right? So from Robert Cole Scott, which is, you know, really getting its due in the 90s and to Candy Wiley, it's just a different style of painting. But it's, you know, we have so many artists who kind of have that, let's merge the street with the classical. Let's add the flavor to the, you know, Grey Poupon, right? And, and to me, it's, it's, it becomes didactic and formulaic and, and in some ways limiting. So if I'm like, this came from this and this is where, you know, it's kind of like a soapbox dance where, where for me, I, I feel, you know, that's why I do on some level appreciate aspects of, of formalism. And formalism is attributed to the formalists, but anybody who does any number, the level of research learns that a lot of formalism has come out of non-Western art. So this idea that something is, is simplistically universal and it's not so specific that you, you can even trace its source. And I think a lot of the, we think of the universal as being this kind of like one truth, you know, maybe it's all truths.
So I interrupted you and asked that question as you were bringing out a piece, but I'm betting that you can inject and make a great transition from that into the piece that you were bringing out.
I could just clear my throat. So, so anyway, no, uh, but, but seriously, uh, so this is a work from 1993. And again, it wasn't until we were having this discussion and I started thinking about, you know, duality vases, that I began to look at this. Uh, and I was telling Garth that this to me, I can imagine 1993, uh, Arnie Zimmerman was probably, you know, my, my hero at that time. So there's this kind of chunkiness, this thing probably weighs 60 pounds. It's probably, you know, two feet tall comparable to the other one, which is a little taller. But, you know, the physiognomy is different. And this is maybe self-portrait like, because at the time I had long dreadlocks and your facial hair. But this is, you know, freshman year of college. So I want to kind of speed up and share one more duality form. And I just think this is really, again, I'm excited about this because I just made this connection. So hopefully it's not like, oh, whatever, hold on one second. But this is a duality vase vessel from 2002. And at the time that I made this one, you know, I was working with high school kids, teaching them how to throw. And as an artist, as a teaching artist in that time, you know, that kind of becomes part of the conversation too. So the work and, and it's, you know, I'm salt firing kilns with kids and, you know, that became part of the conversation. So very similarly, there's graffiti, dreadlock forms on the side, it represent hair. But obviously made in a very different way than the other two. So that's, uh, four takes on the same pot. Give me one second, I'm gonna.
I was just wanting to remark also that, you know, we have Eva Kwong on the call here and the Kirk, the Kirk Mangus-ness of that piece is so impressive. The way that he engaged a pot and carved away to create images and pieces that were wood fired and traditional ceramic processes.
My, my high school heroes are as follows. I was obsessed with the work of, of Arnie Zimmerman because of his scale and his physicality. I, I love the work of, uh, of Ron Myers because of his, his, the kind of, uh, fluidity and nonchalance of how he was able to, to, to merge image and form. And Norm Schulman and Kirk Mangus, although their work is different, there was, uh, there's a freedom in that work that, uh, that somebody can spend a lifetime pursuing. You know, it was just like, it just poured out. And, and I, I talk a lot about, uh, what I refer to as the art world gaze. And, and some of us are responding to people responding to them. But I know that Norm's integrity did not allow for that, just because I actually got to know Norm a bit. And, and I didn't know Kirk as well as I would have liked to, but I could just see the diversity of his work. And you just, you just never knew what he was coming up with, you know? I feel like Lee Rexrode is the same way. Like I can look at Lee Rexrode's work every two or three years and it's like a whole different person. And, and I always admired that, that someone is, uh, is interested enough or is free enough to kind of make that, brave enough to kind of make that, that transition. And let's compare him to somebody like Jim Makins, whose work is really interesting to me. But the way that I describe, yeah, just because I'm hunched down right now because my phone is charging. But the way that I described, you know, somebody like, I think it's an interesting parallel to look at somebody's work like Jim Makins and compare it to somebody like Kirk or, or Norm, or Norm Schulman. Because it's almost like someone has this dial and they're just fine tuning static out, like the old school radio dial, the tuner. And, and, you know, the shifts in somebody's work like Jim Makins was, seems very subtle throughout his career. He's making these, you know, still life forms with throwing rings. And that's, you know, it's a valid quest for him. It's not for me to say whose quest is valid, but I just, I just love the bravery of someone who's, who's willing to just, like, I, I, I went to see Norm a couple of times and he was in there welding, you know? And I go back and he's doing like myolika goldfish on the side of a pot. Then I go back and he's wood firing giant pots, you know? And I'm talking like, sometimes like six months apart. I was just like, you know, I, I want to feel that kind of courage and freedom that if I want to step outside of myself and, and ask a whole new set of questions with a whole new tool that I'm not even familiar with, that I won't be worried about how people think of me.
So I, I wanted to point out that as a medium-specific curator, it is so refreshing. And I feel like I've been waiting all my life for someone to come, uh, come around who has a dialogue with the art world and is, is getting attention. Who is unapologetic about their connections to, I don't know, greats within the pottery world. To be able to talk about Arnie Zimmerman and Norm Schulman and, uh, and other people, I think so many artists who are engaging kind of the fine art world protest too much sometimes in, um, saying that, you know, they are only looking at painters or, uh, you know, abstract sculptors in their work and not looking to, um, the community that, um, has not gotten enough attention for its investigations into materiality and history and form. And so the way that you synthesize all of those things, um, I think is constantly interesting to me.
Yeah, I mean, I like to think that, again, my interest in functional pots, my interest in teaching, my interest in being a student of the world, a student of art, all have a place in my, uh, in, in my, in my process. And, and what I'm afraid of, when I see happen to a lot of people, and maybe it's just, you know, inevitability, once you become, you know, so seasoned and experienced that the trajectory of your work is predicated on the trajectory of your work.
So I want to point out, uh, a few people are putting up comments, which is awesome. I encourage everyone to use the comments tool and say hello from wherever you are and you can ask comments. And I'm going to ask Sharif to talk a little bit about some of the newest pieces that he's working on. And then we will have some time to answer some questions in a little bit. It's amazing that, you know, so many people, um, who are connected to you are on this call. Josh Green, uh, is here and he brought up Carl Dingbat Smith and the nail pieces that he did. And my visit to the Manchester Craftsman Guild, that was an amazing discovery for me, getting to see the pieces that they had in their boardroom there. Rachel Delfia brings up the Nkisi power figure in the Carnegie's collection where you hung out as a kid and a teen. So we'll have, uh, time to bring some of these things up, uh, as well. So I encourage everyone to use that, uh, feature. So what else you got for us, Sharif?
Okay, so right now, and these ones are going to be really different because they're going to integrate color. And that's to be continued. So I have these really large, uh, maybe I can even give you a, an idea of scale by, uh, so these are duality vases that these lids kind of remind me, they're going to have something on top, some sort of sculptural form. But they remind me very much of like an old school, like vowel cushion type lid. But these things are about 30, 34 inches tall, 36 inches tall. So these are to be determined because what I'm imagining is, uh, it's something very colorful Afro-like emanating from this, uh, central mass, like, these are in the making. I have several of these, but I'm just informing a conversation. So this is in the spirit of the Nkisi, which Rachel's right, was inspired by the Nkisi that I saw at the Carnegie. And then Carl Dingbat's work was interestingly, almost like a subconscious thing, like 30 years later, I was like, what were those things in the boardroom that I never paid much attention to? But apparently I did pay attention to them because I've been seeing them for 32 years, you know? So, and then I started to do research and find out more about him and, and trace works of his and connect them to, uh, to people who I knew. And it's like, I'm finding people now who own Dingbat's work. This is a, a mother and child form that is inspired by, again, a lot of times there is a vessel. Like I like to think of myself as a sculptor who looks to the tradition of pottery to inform my work. So you can see that there's a stirrup vessel within this female figure. And I'm, I'm firing metal into this one, in this case, it's eye screws that represent hair. And these are all works that have been made since the quarantine so that the, uh, the vocabulary in terms of surface and color is limited to terra sigillata. This is a form that I'm really interested in and it's really hard to, to really grasp this thing. I guess that means it's so convincingly three-dimensional because it's really difficult to, to represent in, um, in digital, but is clearly inspired by, uh, formalism. But I think of this as almost like a scoop because it is a vessel in its own right. The bottom part is kind of a throne form. But this piece I, I call, uh, the drinking gorge. And although it references like a functional object, drinking gorge is also a metaphor for, um, like abolitionism and, and finding the way to freedom for slaves. So drinking gorge is like the North Star. And I found another connection between this piece here and an older vessel that I didn't even realize. Again, kind of foreshadows this one. And this is a, a vessel inspired by gourd that has the same kind of mouth spout from 2011, but also has thrown appendages on it. What I like about this form is the kind of lid. And the lid offers me an opportunity to, uh, to integrate different kinds of imagery. I talked a little bit about, uh, you know, being a doctoral student at Penn State. And although I didn't study clay, you know, as an MFA there, I was afforded opportunities, I'm plugging my phone back in. I was afforded opportunities to teach clay and have great conversations with the faculty there and take a couple of, uh, independent studies. So, um, I, I believe one year Chris was on sabbatical and I worked with Mick Drilling for a semester. And he's, you know, you know, to me, a really, really great potter and a great guy. Um, and I would have him come to my home studio and we'd have tea and talk about my work. And of course I worked with Liz Quackenbush. So I did have independent studies with them, which was really unconventional for a PhD student to take studio classes at, under that, um, under their paradigm then. It's much more, uh, supported now, like Roberto Lugo's taking PhD classes when he's at Penn State. And I think at one point he was a PhD student, still working in the studio there. But, uh, the reason I bring this up is because Liz was great in encouraging me to, to bring out some of this imagery. And I, I attribute some of the, uh, some of the ideas that she gave me to like evolve into things like this, which is a lid for a form, but a sculpture in its own right. So those pieces have kind of evolved into objects themselves. I'm going to go grab one more object.
Great.
And I shared this already with Garth, but like, so this is now a, a smaller vessel. It's kind of evolved out of the lids. And when I was at Penn State, uh, I think a lot of ceramic teachers have this issue. But, you know, it's firing these giant coil pots for the students, ceramics one. And I kept finding these kind of, uh, you know, just some sort of clandestine, uh, operation to get these pipes fired, right? So it's like in between two lids inside of a cup and they were just awful, right? So I kind of, you know, I was just a PhD student, I wasn't on 10-year track. So maybe I was able to take certain liberties in the summer of, you know, 2002 or whatever. And, um, and I started like a, uh, kind of a hidden curriculum for students. And we started, you know, making, uh, pipes. And I, I talked to them about, you know, there's some of the same sensibilities in making a pipe that there would be to make a cup, right? This thing is going to intimately fit in our hand and interface with our mouth. So ergonomically, there are certain considerations that, uh, that, that, you know, there's, there's a cross-cultural reference between pipes and teacups and mugs. So these things are kind of stemming from some of the forms I made in demonstration for that class where I was integrating images into these kind of functional pipes. And lastly, um, this is a series of work that I'm pursuing that, and again, I didn't realize this thing relates to, uh, did I screw up the horizontal thing?
You're fine for now, you can.
Okay. So.
Either way.
These are kind of like large clay staffs. And I want to say they're about four, four and a half feet. And I didn't think of these until our conversation yesterday, Garth, that these also relate to duality. So there's a, there's a conversation between this end of the table and this end of the table. And with that, you know, the connection between this conversation is this kind of scarring and patterning and texture and symbolism. And, and this, this also kind of relates again to my pottery background because I can't fire things in my kiln that are four and a half feet wide. So this becomes a kind of a cover jar, right? A cover lid. So they're joined in a way that I would join two lidded jars or join a lid to a jar.
And can you talk a little bit about, we don't have, of course, any of the pieces down in your studio, but you are working on a series of larger scale, uh, pieces than anything that you've worked on, uh, up until this point. That will be debuted in Pittsburgh, right?
Yeah, so, um, one of the things that I was really excited about this summer that was kind of, uh, and who knows if, if or when campus will open back up, but your conversation's going on, is I, I, you know, really wanted to make some things that were comparable in scale to some of those, uh, Arnie Zimmerman, you know, vessels. And so we're talking about at least six feet tall, right? And, um, and I wanted to do them in single pieces this summer, whether it's strong coils or otherwise. But the current project is, um, you know, I'm working totemically because the hope is that these pieces will exceed 12 feet tall. The, the hope is that they would really, uh, really push scale. So I'm still doing that, like these have bases, these pieces here. Um, and they're 36 inches, but I'm still limited to what fits through the door here because I'm taking these out leather hard. I'm taking these out leather-hard and putting them in the car and driving, trapping them to campus. But there is a, there is a system in these where I can stack these totemically. So this would be the top of a, of a much larger form. And, um, and some of those integrate shards. I don't have any pieces here that integrate shards, um, because I haven't been working in that way since the quarantine. And also, most of the pieces in here have, uh, well, all of them, have figural elements, where that's not always the case of my work, although it, it has been since, uh, since I've been on lockdown. And, um, and one thing, I don't know how we are on time, but the other thing I'm working on, speaking of scale, is I'm continuing this series of, of necklaces. And, um, a kind of getting back to, you know, kind of slices into that conversation about not having time or space to do certain things. So initially, they were kind of handheld things, and I components that were, you know, really their pinch pots that I can make, you know, relatively quickly and fire with terra sigillata in the fireplace.
And Sharif, can I get you to grab that piece and kind of go back to where you were sitting? I think you're in something of a Wi-Fi dead spot right now, but we got good visuals for the pieces. There we go.
Okay. So maybe I'll show you stuff, and then I'll retreat.
Yeah, you can, you can talk, but we, I might ask you to do a little bit of recapping.
Okay, so, um, so I started off making these things, you know, one at a time. And I, I got to the point where I can make one in three minutes. So I'd sit and watch TV with the kids and make a stack of these in the living room or wherever. And after going on sabbatical and working in, um, at the Kohler Plumbing Factory, I started slip casting these things and making them much more exacting. So the current piece that I'm, and again, I also want to add that some of these have attachments that are almost like, what do you call them, like, centerpieces for the necklaces? And many of them are, again, inspired by functional works, like this is a strainer. So this will be the centerpiece of a necklace. Can you hear me, Garth?
Yes, breaking up a little bit, but we're, we're able to follow.
All right. All right, I'm going to run it back to the other side of the room, but I'm going to take something with me, okay? So, and here's another, um, so this is the current piece that I'm working on. And I could not, I, I put it away, and I didn't want to put it back out, because it's about seven feet long. And this particular piece has hundreds of these slip cast forms. And they're fired in the fireplace with colors and terra sigillata and burnished. So this is going to have quite a presence when it's assembled. And just to give you an idea of how that will look.
And you can talk about your work in glass as well. We'll, we'll allow that, even though it's a clay conversation.
Well, I have a learning station here for glass, so that's good. I mean, I think one of the things that's important, I did a residency in glass a couple of years ago, and I'm still working in glass, but it's just, uh, the process is so, um, it's so demanding in terms of time. It's a very different kind of rhythm. I mean, the thing that I love about working in clay is that whole cooking show aspect of it, you know, where, you know, I'm literally, you know, I'm, I'm throwing coils on one side of the room, and I'm slip casting on another side of the room, and I'm drying out pots that I want to trim in, in the other side of the room. And anybody who knows and works in clay knows that it's really nice to be able to, to move around. And sometimes I, I feel like aspects of the, the glass process are like, uh, it's much more like design and sometimes like interior design, because you're, you're having color swatch meetings. And, and, and mistakes are so much more costly. And, you know, I can imagine, like, uh, like one of these beads in glass is probably about twenty-five to thirty dollars in material. That's just for one bead. And a kiln of glass beads, a full kiln might be eight beads, where when I'm slip casting these, I don't, I just tumble stack them. I mean, I could probably put, I could put a few hundred of these in a kiln at one time. And you all know that slip doesn't cost much compared to a, a glass building. So I, I love probably as much as anything, the shadows of the wall works and how the shadows have an luminosity, where it's like the light shines through the glass, and I end up with these almost celestial halos of color around the shadows that are cast on the wall. And I, I love that about these forms, but it's, um, it's much more like, uh, like bronze in comparison to, uh, because there's also a lot of cold working to get that form. And as you know, the, the slip cast form, I can just wipe off, right? But I do have a, a couple of ongoing pieces in glass. And the other difference in glasswork too is, uh, I mean, I don't contract out a lot of work at all. I mean, I have, sometimes I have somebody make a couple of molds or, uh, one thing I hate to do is wipe molds. So I, I do have some young people who kind of put on earphones and spend hours on end just wiping molds for me, and I'm happy to pay someone to do that. But, uh, the other thing about glass is that I don't, I don't have all the experience necessary to do this on my own. And I'm kind of old school in that, uh, I'm not used to not doing my own work. Right? And even though it's like, I made this form, I made the mold, but now someone has to take these waxes and, and invest them and do the cold working and polish them. And, and that's, that's beyond my capabilities.
So I'm going to head things toward wrapping up, but the last question that I have for you, which I guess is kind of a hard question to answer in a brief way. I moved to Syracuse two years ago, and it has been interesting to, um, learn to inhabit Syracuse as a city. And it's interesting to reflect on Syracuse University within the larger city. Syracuse has a very large, but very impoverished African-American community. Inequality is cooked into Syracuse because of, I think, a lot of decisions that were made back in the nineteen fifties and sixties and even earlier, when it came to civic planning. Syracuse University was, you know, has been roiled by racial tensions in the last year in particular. Can you reflect a little bit on sort of making your career and adult life in cities like, a city like Syracuse that has such complicated layers of, um, you know, relations to the civil rights movement, but to sort of structural racism and inequality and privilege?
Well, I mean, uh, I think that, you know, it, it's definitely one of the worst in the sense that the disparity and, and it's also, as you know, it's rent, right? So it's not just, it's another post-industrial city with racial inequality, it's one of the post-industrial cities with racial equality. And, and that, that whole, okay, we have the university and we have the, we have the hospital, and like most or many post-industrial cities, that's kind of it, right? We don't, we don't really have anything like, and I, I see these houses, I mean, I live in the city, and, and I see these amazing houses and these amazing neighborhoods, and, and I wonder like, what, what built them, right? And, and, and it's not been gentrified, there's talk of doing this and that to this block or that area, but, uh, it hasn't quite found new life here yet either. And I don't know how, how bad it has to get before something happens, and I'm not advocating for gentrification, I'm just saying that it's, it's really, it's really interesting to go and to see that happen in certain cities, you know? Like, there are places in Pittsburgh where, you know, people collect my work, and I, I literally remember, you know, the police being called on me for shoveling walks in that neighborhood to make, you know, try to make money as a college student, you know? Not having a landscape permit, you know, you're twenty years old with a snow shovel. So the idea that, that, uh, you know, attitudes change, and sometimes for the best, sometimes not necessarily for the best, it's, it's troubling. I mean, I don't necessarily know how to respond to that. I will say that, you know, despite, you know, living in, in an area of the city that is a quote-unquote safer, you know, I do have teenage sons that, um, that play in the playgrounds around here and, you know, and I can't say that, uh, that I feel comfortable, you know, with, uh, with them being, you know, existing in the world and not, uh, having those kinds of labels placed on them. I think it's, it's a scary time. Well, I don't necessarily know that it's any more scary than it's ever been. I just think that just like, just like anything else, the, you know, we're, we're becoming acutely aware of the injustices that, uh, that many people have endured for generations. And, um, and I'm, I'm hoping that, uh, that the raise of awareness of people, for people will, uh, will create the necessary advocacy to evoke change.
I think that's probably a perfect place to wind up. The museum, you know, struggles with our place in the community, and, uh, all of this is part of taking a frank look at our responsibilities. And we're entering an interesting new era, and I think there are lots of challenges and opportunities with that, so--
Garth, can I, can I add one quick thing? I'm sorry to cut you.
Yes.
Well, I mean, speaking of museums and such, I mean, I'd be remiss not to talk about, you know, because we talked a little bit about representation, and, and this is where the educational component comes back into play, right? Syracuse, I mean, Eversin Museum is blocks away from a, you know, a desperate, you know, housing project that's full of children and, and, and adults who could use, uh, the cultural benefit of having access to feeling, you know, to feeling like they are welcome at a place like the Eversin. And, and I think that, you know, in reflecting, one thing that I didn't get to talk about, I talked about all these, you know, heroic figures, and we talked about ceramic history, you know, is that, and, and I talked about the anthropological context for looking at artists of color, but, you know, my hope is that we can get beyond the supplemental or compensatory model. Because I didn't, I didn't get to talk about David, we talked about David McDonald, but Winnie Owens Hart, Yvonne Tucker, James Tanner, you know, James Watkins, you know? These artists came, you know, through the Manchester Craftsman Guild Visiting Artists Program, but also like, you know, for years and years, there was a series of black clay shows, right? And had it not been for black clay shows, I, I don't think we, many of people would know who these artists were. So it was, you know, somebody's effort to say, Insignia needs a show to supplement these voices that are being excluded. And I think that, you know, something I wanted to make sure that I talked about is, you know, we have to get to the point where we can have an inclusive conversation. So how do these works and these artists' histories inform the canon that we accept as the status quo? Does that make sense, what I'm saying? And it not, and it not being one or the other, or we have to add this in, you know, as a footnote?
All right, so I'm going to draw it to a close, but I encourage anyone who wants to stay on and turn on their webcam and unmute themselves, you can say hi to us, and we can consider, continue the conversation. If you haven't gotten a chance to look through the comments, please do so. I want to put in a plug for Studio Potter, who has put together a calendar that will allow you to track different Zoom events, like today, the Clay Studio, the American Craft Council. Other museums are doing lots of programmings around, programming around ceramics. You can find that, find that on the Studio Potter's website, and they've been supporting our efforts, uh, very well to that end. Look through the comments. Rachel Delphia left some links to pieces in the Carnegie's collection, and there's a link also to Sharif's website, which is sharifdayceramics.com. Is that right? But Sharif, I want to thank you, and this is part of a dialogue that is going to continue for the next, uh, years and far beyond that. So, um, thank you, Sharif.
Oh, thanks, it's been great to be here.
Absolutely. And join us next week for a conversation about Howard Kotler, featuring Paul Cattula and Dr. Judith Schwartz. So stick around and say hi.